I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adjustments to the agenda.
There was one adjustment, you can see it in item C, is to add item number three and renumber previous items three to four, to four to five.
I make a motion to adjust the agenda by adding the following to J, new business number, and number previous to three and four, to four and four to five as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Item D, approval of minutes for December 11th, 2018.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of December 11th, 2018 board meeting as presented.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Minutes for December 17th, 2018.
Recommend a motion to approve the minutes of December 17th, 2018 special board meeting as presented.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Item E, communications and correspondence.
There are three letters, two retirements, one resignation that are circulating now that I will address in my report. There's also one other correspondence letter from a teacher which we'll take up later in the agenda.
Okay. F, public participation. Item G, administrative board reports. Mr. Clifford.
Good evening. You have my report. First, I just want to talk about the empty bowl supper. And this is kind of good timing because we had to cancel it twice because of weather. So it is this Wednesday from 5:00 to 7:00. So if you're not doing anything, come on out. And we have over, I think she was saying, over 120 bowls made that will be ready. And so you can come in and give a donation, pick up your bowl, and start eating. Vacation standards recovery, we had 21 students participate in standards recovery. I don't know how many standards were improved because of that right now, but 21 students is the most we've had since last February break. So we're really happy with that, with that number. And you have the first grade breakdown for the first quarter. When you look at the failure rate, so ninth, 10th, and 12th grade were around 4%, which is excellent. We're really happy with that. Juniors were at 8%, which is a little high, higher than we would like, but we're really happy with the 4% in overall. So students did well overall in the first quarter and worked hard. And when the second quarter is finalized, which the last day is Friday, so in a couple weeks I'll have that data for you.
Questions? Anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gabinelli.
Good evening. As we kick off 2019, the staff at EMS is reflecting on our climate and culture. And we've decided to kind of adopt a new motto that embodies the mission and vision of the Ellsworth School Department. We are looking at intention plus action equals magic. And in 2019, we looked for more, to move away from more of the traditional practices to intentionally engaging practices that encourage inquiry and risk-taking within our classrooms. And we guide, as we guide students through their educational journey, with a clear intention that's put into action, we believe that we can create a thirst for knowledge and desire to embrace lifelong learning within our students and create a thirst, oh, sorry, I said that, create a thirst for knowledge, thus creating the magic. So we are really working on being intentional with our practice and taking in all the things that we're learning through Ken O'Connor and all the work that we're doing with professional development to do that. We're also continuing our work with the RTI process and assessment and grading and continuing our work with Jan Schaffee. Co-curricular news, show choir has begun, so that's pretty exciting. We are continuing with our winter sports. They're off to a great start, and we're in mid-season, mid-stride. We'll be looking at playoffs pretty soon. And our snowflake dance took place this past Saturday. It was wonderful, my first experience with the semi-formal at EMS, and the kids looked fantastic. Kudos to my staff. They all came, organized the whole thing. Mrs. Stackpole did a great job organizing it and got chaperones there, and it was phenomenal. We had a fantastic time, and the kids looked awesome. And the PTF meeting that was supposed to be held last Tuesday was postponed due to weather, and it is going to be tomorrow at 4:00 PM in the middle school library. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis.
Mrs. Gabbinelli and I just make way for each other coming and going. It works really well for us. I love it. And I would add to that, that we are working really hard to take a look at our school as K to eight, not K to four and five to eight. And that has significant implications as you look forward to new leadership there. Among the things that Erica mentioned were activities that happened before the holidays. It seems like that was so long ago. But that season of caring and sharing was most evident, I think, in our school as kids helped one another select gifts for their parents and their family members. And I mentioned in my December report that PTF was doing that program. Your PTF is as active as any parent organization in any school I have ever worked with. And between movie night, which I had the opportunity to stay and enjoy, we had a great time, plus I loved the movie. That was a nice opportunity for, I didn't go in my pajamas, cut it out. I did think about it, and I did have my pillow in the office, but I did not bring it out like the kids did. But it was a great opportunity to see families together enjoying each other and the kids having that opportunity to be in school for something other than the academic part of it or the after-school sports. It was just amazing. But for me, it was the whole, it really summarized the whole season of caring and sharing, which is a beautiful way to lead into the new school year. Ms. Gabbinelli and I have talked a lot about how do we make sure that our teachers feel safe and comfortable and therefore our children feel safe and comfortable and that we're doing absolutely the best possible educational and learning opportunities for them as is possible. We really need to be looking at how do we enculturate new kids coming in because since I wrote this report, we have more. But since the start back up after the holidays, we have five new students. And Jackson Lab has only filled 30 of their 330 spaces that they're going to look at, from what I understand. So again, how do we take a school that's as big as that is and make sure that every child knows that they are cared about and valued? And by the same token, how do we do that for staff? All staff, teachers and text custodians, bus drivers. And I think that in December, we had wonderful opportunities with the cooks and the custodians and the bus drivers to say not only thank you, but thanks for being a part of what's so important for our kids. So as we look forward the rest of the year, we have all kinds of opportunities coming up. We'll continue to take those, but we're still having a great time and loving the kids. Thank you.
Ms. Bowles.
Good evening. Well, like Mr. Clifford said, our holiday buffet is set to happen tomorrow evening. We're amazed that the gingerbread houses have held up as long as they have. The kids keep fixing them, so we're anxious and hoping that we'll have a wonderful turnout tomorrow. The public is welcome to come anytime between 12:00 and 1:30. Skills USA, I wanted to give you that date now so you could put it on your calendar. Skills USA is going to be held Friday, March 8th, at United Technology Center. Currently, right now, we are working on which students will be representing us in all of the different competitions. And in competitions where there's multiple students that want to compete, we're doing in-school competitions. Skills has become so popular that now we have to have a process for selecting who goes, so we're working on that. As it gets closer, I always provide the board with the schedule and which competitions you can go and watch and see our kids in because not all of them are open to the public. Our annual guidance counselor breakfast was this past Thursday. We called it guidance breakfast. I really want to change it to leadership breakfast because we have all of our Hancock County superintendents, curriculum coordinators, high school principals, and high school guidance counselors. And we talk about, it's kind of a kickoff event to talking about what's coming for HCTC in the upcoming year and as I begin the recruitment process this spring, what are some things that we're looking to change or do and what are our hopes for the recruiting season? So I felt like that went very well. January is going to be the first time that we have our middle school and CTE activity for kids. So all sixth graders across Hancock County will be coming at some point in late January, early February. Kids are being sent a Google survey, just takes a couple of minutes to fill out, and they're going to experience two programs and do hands-on activities with our high schoolers. And our high schoolers will be partnered with the sixth graders and be a mentor to them during that time. So we're hoping that this will be successful. Our Ellsworth sixth graders are coming Thursday, January 24th, so we'll be able to let you know in February how that event goes. Finally, I wanted to attach for you, it was an attachment in my board report, all of the concurrent enrollments and articulation agreements because a lot of people really don't realize how many college opportunities there are by coming to HCTC. So I just wanted to explain for a second. Our programs have two opportunities. One is an articulation agreement and one's concurrent enrollment. Articulation agreements are specific agreements with a particular school. So if a program has an articulation agreement with a specific school and the child applies and gets in and decides to go to that school, then they're awarded the credits in the agreement. A concurrent enrollment is this child gets a transcript and those can be transferable anywhere. So we've worked really hard over the last couple of years, first under Heather Pelletier and now Popeye, to really expand our opportunities for kids. And we now have an articulation agreement or concurrent enrollment in every single program, and we couldn't say that a year ago. So we're really excited about all the opportunities. And what a lot of people don't realize is the saving of time and money by having these opportunities available to them. And for those students that do bridge year, you can earn your bridge year credits, which is up to 24 credits, plus these on top of that, and students can really get farther ahead with their college savings and planning. So I provided that as an attachment for you so that you could see all of the updated agreements that we have. Any questions?
Thank you. Ms. Bowles.
Hi, everybody. I haven't been able to come to a board meeting in a while, so it's nice to see everybody. So our spring registrations are pouring in, and as I left the office tonight, I asked Marilyn if they really were pouring in or if it was just a comment that I made, and she said that she feels, we haven't done the numbers, but she feels like it's a really high enrollment, so we're excited about that. We have, I don't know how many of you have had a chance to look at our course catalog, but Marilyn always does a great job on that. And we have lots of new courses. We have about 100 courses total. We have the Picklers, the Ellsworth Picklers. We're collaborating with them to provide pickleball. Brian Langley and Brian Hubbell are doing a civility workshop. And Fogtown Brewing is doing a homebrew. And then we have spinning wool with a drop spindle, recycled paper. Another woman, she's an art therapist, and she's running a workshop on creating your own comic book. She uses it for art therapy, but this is for the general public, so, and she's a dynamite person, so I can imagine that her course will be excellent. And then we have Dan Conti, who's the music director at St. Joseph's Church, is bringing back his courses that he offered last fall in all kinds of music classes. So check them out. We have, we have waiting lists for a handful of classes, but a lot of them still have openings. And this semester, more than any other, I've gotten so many people inquire about teaching classes as a result of this catalog. So we're going to add some courses on the website as well, so check the website for more classes. Somebody's going to teach a chess class, and there's going to be an advanced women's defense class, and anyway, there are quite a few additional classes. For the first time in many years, we're offering a New Books, New Readers program, and I handed out to the board a description of that. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that program, but it's through the Maine Humanities Council, and it's a book discussion group for people who are not confident in their reading skills. And from my experience, even with college transition students, so students who are, adult students who are thinking of going back to college but aren't very confident about finding their voice in a classroom, it's actually a really great opportunity to have a substantive humanities discussion. And they actually use children's books, so the reading is very accessible, but they're beautifully written children's literature books. And I always say, as I raised two children, that good children's books are not written for the kids, but they're written for the parents who are reading the books to their kids. And the books that they choose are really beautiful books. And there are nine of them in all, nine books in all, and you get to take them home, so they're, they're yours to keep. So it's an exciting program. It starts the end of January and is a monthly book club for three months. An interesting thing in the catalog, I didn't specifically say it was for new readers because I want it to be very accessible, and it sounds like we might start a book discussion group for people who are not new readers because several people contacted me hoping that it was a book discussion group. So I think there's a need for that. So that's another thing that, if you're interested in a book discussion group, give us a call because we're starting up a list of people who want to do that. I think adulthood is a great way to connect people in the community, especially in the wintertime when people are looking to meet new people or make connections. So our evening CNA program, thanks to Amy Bowles, we're holding it here, which is so exciting because that health occupation room is dynamite and really changes the way we can offer CNA. And sadly, I've had a woman in tears because we have a waiting list for the class. We can only take 10 people in a CNA class, and I think we might have 15 interested, so I'm trying to see if we can find somebody else to do a second clinical or the instructor is thinking about it, so there's a possibility. So if you're interested in CNA, it's not too late to at least put your hat in the ring. And I won't go into a lot of detail, but there's a, an organization out of Acxiom Technologies that is a national digital inclusion center, and they're offering classes through AmeriCorVistas statewide. And so if you look in our catalog, our technology classes are available at no cost because these volunteers are teaching the classes. And they are very popular. In fact, some of them have already filled. They will probably be offering those classes through the summer because they work through the summer. So we don't usually offer classes in the summer because our staff isn't, doesn't work through the summer. So if you're interested, get yourself on a waiting list and we can accommodate you. And then last, we're, we really have been working on, I've been trying to fine-tune an office skills program for some time, and, and we've really made it this semester affordable and hands-on and really integrating it more into our learning center. So we have a business English course, customer service, office skills model office, and then WOWE, which is an integrated career assessment, which I've talked about at a school board meeting before, and then a menu of computer classes. So if anybody is interested in learning more about that, I encourage you to call. That program starts the first week in February. Busy, but great. I love it. Any questions? Thank you.
Nice job on this catalog.
The curriculum coordinator's report is online.
It was distributed to members through a packet, and Ms. Corwin-Ramos is unable to be here as the activity, her daughter has at their school this evening.
Well, the superintendent's report, please, Mr.-
Well, I've got one for you.
Good.
You know, you've heard some of our other presenters, administrators, talk about losing some days to storms, so let's talk a little bit quickly about a storm day update. As of today, and I actually wrote this for the January 8th meeting, but it's still pertinent today because we haven't had another storm day, we've used all three days allocated for cancellation days this year. So pending further use of cancellation days, and we certainly hope we have no more, we'll see, the final student day would be June 19th. Now, I think we're very fortunate, as you probably saw on the weather forecast this evening, there's a significant storm system headed our way that's supposed to come in Sunday. Monday's a holiday, so hopefully that's not going to impact us. We'll see. Just a quick update with the Hancock County superintendents. Wanted to report to you that at our December meeting, we invited newly elected Hancock County legislators to meet with superintendents to open up or reopen lines of communication for the upcoming session and also talk about priorities in terms of what local educators are looking for and hear what our new senators and representatives are looking for. Meeting was very positive. We had over a dozen of our new legislators here, including Senator Louis Lucchini, who we are all familiar with, particularly in his time in the House of Representatives, and Ellsworth graduate representative Nicole Grohasky. And both of them have Ellsworth and the towns they represent. Again, the meeting was very positive, and the lines of communication are wide open for the upcoming session. And as an aside to that, if you look on the main department, State Department website legislative section, there are well over 2,500 bill titles that have been submitted already for the upcoming session, many of them in education. I think it's going to be a busy spring in Augusta. With regard to the weather piece, Hancock County superintendents were scheduled to also have as a guest at our last meeting, State Board of Education member Wendy Alt. Because of the weather conditions where she comes from, she was unable to be here. She's going to come in and visit at our February meeting, and that'll be another conversation similar to what we have with legislators. And I think it's very important to know that superintendents locally are getting the communication channels out to not just legislators, but also members of the State Board of Education. And with a new governor, a new commissioner coming online, I think that's critically important. Quick update on the Every Student Succeeds Act report card distribution. I know I kept board members updated on this through the Christmas vacation. The report cards were supposed to have been disseminated to the public on January 7th, but during the review period that was afforded to school systems, many school systems noticed that there were a number of errors in the way that the information was being presented. And the Department of Education made a very wise decision in my regard to withhold the distribution of those report cards until such time as they could correct the information. There were mistakes with regard to numbers of students taking assessments, address and telephone contact information. Assessment data for students did not match up with the schools in which the students attended. So I think it's more of a technical issue than not, but I believe the Department of Ed is working on it very hard right now. There was no word as to when those report cards are going to be distributed, but certainly we will keep you as a board updated. I'd like to close tonight by talking about, this is kind of a takeoff on what Mrs. Lewis talked about earlier about the safety and security of staff and students, and this one focuses on students. We'll talk about a new initiative for the school department that's going to be known as the Ellsworth School Department Lunchbox. This is a program that has come about as a result of conversations that my wife Tammy and I had over the past few weeks with regard to students, with regard to holiday seasons. Even though holidays are a positive time, they're a difficult time for many people. And our conversation evolved into not just difficult times for families, but also difficult times for children, lunch debt, and being able to afford meals. So we came up with the idea of having a fund created called the Ellsworth School Department Lunchbox to which individuals or groups can donate funds, to be maintained in an account, and distributed to support students who are truly in need. You know, one of the questions that would come up is, well, how would you determine who to distribute the money to? Similar to what we do with the Lunchbox program, where Mr. Daley, School Service Director, our school nursing personnel and guidance personnel, identify which students and families are eligible for that program, we would do the same type of thing for this program. One of the things that we needed to do was make sure that this program passed muster both legally and from our auditor. So conversations with the school department's auditor and with the school department's council indicate that those programs are fine to move forward with. So for those people who are interested in making donations, at this point in time, we do not have an online component for that. We're working on it. For those people interested, you can send a check to the Ellsworth School Department Lunchbox and send that to the superintendent's office, or you can call the superintendent's office at 664-7100 for more information. Based upon the generosity and support of the Ellsworth community, I'm certain that this is going to be an initiative where there are going to be people who will recognize that we have students in need and will want to contribute to a very worthy cause. We have hired one new staff member since the last board meeting, new ed tech one at EEMS working in the Special Education Department, Joanne Lambert, and correspondence that was mentioned earlier in the evening. Kathy Lewis, principal at EES, will be retiring, resigning.
One of them.
Retiring, resigning at the end of the current school year. Mary Michael Billings, gifted and talented teacher at EEMS, will also be retiring in the school year. And Meg Donahue on ed tech at EEMS has resigned and is moving on to other opportunities. Unless you have questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Item H, committee reports.
Policy committee has not met at this time as we have not had a recent need.
And personnel committee has no updates at this time. I can, it's not exactly a committee, but I am the legislative liaison for our school board, which means I'm the person who reaches out to our local legislators on behalf of the board when we want to communicate to them or, and/or I may receive correspondence from them to share with the board. And this past Saturday, there was a meeting held and kind of a seminar and meeting held actually in this very room that was organized by Skip Greenlaw, who's a school board member from Deer Isle Stonington, and he's also a longtime school board member. He's also formerly a legislator, and he is also vice president of the Maine School Board Association. Skip came along with Steve Bailey, who's the executive director of the Maine School Board Association. And we had school board members from districts three and four, which is Washington County and Hancock County, present in this room. Abby and Rob also attended the meeting, so I'd say there are like at least two dozen board members here, maybe a little bit more, representing communities from Calis to MDI down to Deer Isle Stonington and Peninsula there. We, we're planning on meeting at least three times a year and probably at future meetings, inviting legislators to join us. This was sort of just an overview of how the legislative process works and what kind of education bills are out there or could be out there. We didn't get, dig into the details of any of them. As Dan mentioned earlier, there's currently almost 2,500 bills in total, and I think they said that around 200 of those were related to education. So not all those bills will make it into, get voted, at a committee or get voted on, but it's important for us as board members to be aware of them. It's important for us to hear feedback from our constituents and our stakeholders. It's important for us to, as a board, to talk about some of these things in workshops. So at the meeting, we had a seminar on the school funding formula, which is quite complex. I can't say, I can't say I can even begin to understand it, but it's helpful, it was a very helpful seminar. We also had former state senator Brian Langley, who just finished his four terms in the Senate after one in the House. And as you, I think everyone knows, he was an instructor in this building in the culinary department for 27 years. He owns a restaurant in Ellsworth. He served on the education committee. He was the chairman of the education committee, so he's quite knowledgeable about issues related to education. And he gave a talk at this meeting and wanted us to understand that the importance of legislators hearing from the boards and other constituents about these education matters. And Skip shared with us contact information for everyone on the Maine School Board Association as well as- as well as all the legislators throughout the state, both in the House and the Senate. So altogether, it was a good meeting, and we came away feeling like we learned a lot, I think. And I did, anyway. And we look forward to meeting regularly in the future. Skip has been talking for a while about trying to get this initiative going and getting these two counties together on a regular basis. And fortunately for us, it's, I think HCTC is a really convenient place for every, considering where everyone's coming from, so we have the least amount of travel involved. So I'm looking forward to continuing this.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Anyone else? Item I, old business, none. Item J, new business, student presentation.
We have Ellsworth middle school student Will Hutchins, who presented to you the board earlier this year with regard to his project with dugouts at EEMS. That project is completed, and he is here tonight to tell you all a little bit about it.
My name is Will Hutchins, I'm troop 36, and I'm here to present my final project for the baseball dugouts. Here is a before and after, I mean before photo, where I put them. And here is now. And here are some local businesses who supported and, excuse me, here's some local businesses that donated to my project. And money raised and materials I collected over time to get to building them. And here are my final costs of what everything was. And here is the timeline of the dugouts. And here are some of the volunteer hours and fundraising to build. I had 118 hours. 13 boys scout troop members had 226 hours, and adult troop scout volunteers had 161 hours. And nine youth non-scout volunteers had 234 hours, and 30 adult non-scout volunteers had 453 hours, for a total of 1,192 hours. And here are some additions and changes from the original plan. Addition of anchor bolts to each dugout, so they wouldn't blow away.
We really appreciate that.
Drainage system behind the visor dugout, because the water came down the hill. And gray stained benches and helmet racks. Door on the visor dugout couldn't, it faced towards the fence, so we put it towards the red shed. 10 by 12 thank you plaque on the home dugout, and changes, no falcon on the back of the dugout, and no baseball bat racks, no clear coat inside the dugouts. And project is complete.
Any questions?
Congratulations, and thank you very much for that addition to our baseball field. We appreciate it.
Yep. It's an impressive number of hours that you put in, and that all the volunteers put in, you know, over 1,000 hours total. And you put in the equivalent of three weeks of full-time work, 40 hours a week. And also, it looks like you did 10% of the total hours that everyone did. So for one individual to do that much, put that much effort into it, is really impressive. So I want to say thank you. How did you find all the time to do that? You just...
Well, I took some weekends off, but I wasn't fishing. So I did it every Sunday, because we weren't allowed to go on Sundays, so I did it every Sunday.
Nice.
I would also say congratulations and thank you. I'm curious, of all the work that you did, and certainly your presentation shows a tremendous amount of time, energy, and effort, and organization, what was the biggest thing that you learned through this process? If you could pick one thing.
Probably communicate a little better with people, because that's something I don't do.
Do you play baseball yourself?
Yes.
What position do you play?
Anywhere they put me.
That facility gets better every year, and this is a fantastic improvement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you. Discussion and consideration of superintendent's school's contract.
I move to amend the superintendent's school's contract in accord with the terms and conditions of employment as recommended.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? This work is, excuse me, this work is done in workshop. I just want people to understand that. And it was agreed upon at our workshop, at our superintendent's evaluation and contract discussions.
I just wanted to say to the board, thank you very much. I appreciate the action you've taken and your expression of support and confidence in the work that I'm doing. And it's really a pleasure to continue to be working here in Ellsworth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Discussion and consideration of teacher leave request.
Would the board like to go into executive session on this?
I make a motion to the board to enter executive session for the purpose of discussion of teacher leave request.
Second that.
Discussion. All those in favor? Okay, so we didn't enter.
Before we kick you all out, we'll just wrap up.
Okay. Number four, negotiations update.
I have nothing to update.
Budget update, number five.
I think the budget update would be that individual department meetings, budget meetings and presentations are starting this week. And as we move forward through those, the board's finance committee, which I believe is Mrs. Thomas, Mr. Hudson, is that correct? Will be called into action very soon. So our staff members in the schools, our administrators have been working very hard in crafting their budget proposals, and we're looking forward to a very fruitful and productive process.
Calendar and announcements. There'll be a special board, school board meeting on January 22nd, 2019, in the Ellsworth School Department Conference Room at 5:30. There'll be a school board workshop on January 22nd, 2019, in the Ellsworth School Department Conference Room at 6 o'clock. And a school board meeting Tuesday, February 12th, 2019, City Hall, Council Chambers at 6:30.
Brendan, would you repeat the first one, please?
The special school board meeting, January 22nd.
Same day as the workshop.
Okay. I thought I missed, heard the dates.
Put them back to back.
Okay.
You heard them, just write to them.
Okay.
Can we adjourn and go back and do that?
We go back to the executive session.
Okay. So now...
So now we're going in.
Executive session at 7:13.